Okay, we will call the county board meeting for the 13th to order at this time. I ask that we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
........................................................................... Thank you.
Rule call shows two supervisors absent, Supervisor Sidletz and Supervisor Schmidt. And just a quick announcement, we need to be patient tonight, and next week, and in July. Lisa will be covering for me for the next two meetings, be nice to her.
All right.
Okay, approval of the agenda, do I hear a motion to approve the agenda?
Bomar moves.
Is there a second?
Per second.
The discussion?
Nineteen yes, zero no.
Any members of the public wishing to be heard? Seeing none, we will move down to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Later, so moves.
Is there a second?
Official second.
Seeing none, we will call the vote, green to approve, red to disapprove.
Nineteen yes, zero no.
Reports, county administrator review and update, update on the market analysis, compensation, study implementation. Lori?
All right, you guys, I'm just filling in today because Randy's on the phone right now. So, there was a letter in the packet from the county administrator which was dated on 5/26, it was updated. There is more information coming, and Randy will be sending, I'm sure, another letter out within a week or so. At the last executive committee meeting, Carl Slendetman did a presentation on the market analysis compensation study plan, and with the human resources director out on vacation, Carl Slendetman will be presenting their presentation at that July county board at the next one. So, Randy is on the phone if we have any, on the telephone if we have any questions.
Any questions? Okay, move on to the capital improvement plan?
Whoa, whoa.
Did you have one, sorry?
I thought you were talking about the study, now we've got to talk about the wages.
The market analysis, yes, we are talking about the update on the market analysis plan.
Market analysis, yeah.
It says market analysis and...
Compensation study.
Compensation.
Yes.
Okay, so do you have questions?
I had questions on compensation.
Okay, Randy, are you on?
I am on.
Okay.
He's just a delay when he watches it online.
Okay, go ahead with your question.
Going down a slippery slope that we didn't think we'd ever go on. I don't know how many folks in this room were here when the sales tax started, started, and everybody was told it was beyond, it was going to be in place until the jail was built. Now it's been in place ever since. I don't know about you folks, but in my district, people remind me of that. And then you decided to use the money for capital improvement projects. Well, okay, now we're using it for wages. And that's not what the, when it was brought into use or back then, when they built the county jail, the intent was of the whole tax, pay for the county jail. Not one time in there did it ever say pay wages. And I know we're in there mingling funds, and it's here, last year, we went through this thing about, we got a million and a quarter back, we give a, and we give a million and a quarter to the, to the, our tax money, our income tax money, to the highway department and pull that million out, because we couldn't use the tax money, income tax money over here, put it over here, took it out, put it over here, and it was washed. And that, not to me, that is not the way things should be run, and it's not the intent of the policies that was put in place.
Okay, Randy, do you want to respond?
Yeah, so the last part first, I'll respond to, that's just not accurate on Supervisor Steele. And maybe Lori, maybe you can answer or explain that better. That wasn't, it was 300,000 of sales tax that we gave to the highway department, we took 200,000 of levy and gave that to DHS, and that is allowed, we've been, we get sales tax all the time to the highway department. And I can go through the history of this, maybe at the next meeting when I'm there, but in 2002, I believe, and I don't have the documents, I had this all in front of me when we went to exec, but in 2002, the county board decided to use the sales tax for tax credit purposes, so you've been using it for wages since 2002. So this is nothing new or nothing different than what you've been doing, it's just more, you're using more of it, that's it. So the, the original ordinance has been changed, and again, I don't have it all in front of me right now, but I want to say four times, four or five different times, so county boards decide to change, each county board is independent of the previous county board. If you wanted to go by the original intent of this, you would, before this even happened, you'd had to cut 1.5 million dollars from the budget, because that's what you're using to offset levy currently with sales tax. So, it is allowed, it is used, we've been doing it for 22 years, I understand, and talked a lot about this at exec, I understand the angst of the people when this happened and when it originally was put in place, but I think there is one county, maybe in the whole state, maybe two, that don't use sales tax. Typically, counties use sales tax for operations, that's very normal operations, we do it a little more unique than most counties, by the way we implement it, but most counties use sales tax just like any other revenue source for operations, and then they try and figure out how to use CIP and, and all that. I think Chippewa County was smart in the way they implemented this, in the fact that we can't use it for two years, but we know if there's going to be an issue or concern, we have a couple of years to plan for that. Like I said in my letter, we're up over 2 million dollars, so we're not even utilizing all the increment that's available in the sales tax from that, but there is no difference from what you've been doing for 20 years, you're just making, using more of it, and you're probably more aware of what it means when you hear that term, but you've been doing it for a long time. And Lori, can you make sure I'm right on what we did with the highway, just to confirm that, I think I have that right, but it's off the top of my head.
You are correct, that was what happened, and I think that was for the 2022 budget.
2022, I know we put some in, sales tax money, into the highway department, and immediately withdrew money less than what we put in, and used it where we couldn't use sales tax money.
Right, and the reason is, is because highway construction is considered a capital improvement, so that's why it was used as a sales tax funds. We gave them 100,000 extra of sales tax funds.
But the money you took out was not sales tax money, was it?
That's correct.
I just, I, just one more statement, but I, I saw this as a report, so naturally, the board doesn't vote on it, but I wanted to bring it up during the report stage, because two, three, four months down the road, well, you are made aware of that at the June meeting. So, just want to make sure everybody's aware of what's going on, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
I just wanted to back up what Buck said, every time I'm talking to anybody, any of the constituents, it's the first thing that always comes up when we're talking about the sales taxes, it was supposed to sunset, it was supposed to sunset, so I can back you up 100% there. And when I was appointed in January to fill out Tom's term, I was just so impressed on how our forefathers had set this up with the two-year lag, I was under the impression that we really weren't using it to balance our budget, and I just make sure, I just want to make sure we don't screw it up, that, you know, we watch this, that it doesn't just, another, another chunk out of the wall there, just keep going downhill, so, thank you.
Anyone else on issue number one, on the market analysis compensation study? Okay, shall we move on to number two, capital improvement plan?
All right, so you'll see in front of you, there is the five-year CIP plan, it's presented on an annual basis for a couple of reasons. The first is it is required by the sales tax ordinance in chapter two, but also, the second reason is that it helps with our bond rating with Moody's, because they want to make sure that we're being fiscally responsible, and the way you're fiscally responsible is you're planning ahead of how your expenditures are going to, large expenditures, I should say. So this five-year plan shows the plans for any departments that are listed for any projects over $50,000. So 2024 is the most important year, so since this is what the resolutions, which are going to be following later in the meeting, that they're referring to, that, that top area of 2024. And then these resolutions will be incorporated in the county administrator proposed budget given to you in late September for the executive committee meeting. And 2025 through 2028 are considered placeholders for future years, they are subject to change, you know, because there's, there's many unknowns known every, all the time, so there might be things that come up. And this plan is also listed on employee portal page, once it's finalized, usually in about a month, a month and a half, for sure. Any questions?
Any questions, seeing none, thank you. Move on to business items. Resolution 1823.
Resolu-, excuse me, resolution to authorize the use of sales tax funds and fund balance to pay debt service liabilities as part of the 2024 Chippewa County budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the sum of 295,923 dollars and 19 cents, or 19 dollars, whatever, be transferred from the sales tax property tax relief fund to the debt service fund and utilize 649,476 dollars and 81 cents from the debt service fund balances for the 2018 capital improvement project bonds for payments on the principal and interest on the 2018 capital improvement radio tower project, transportation bonds, and refunding the previous bonding to be included in the 2024 Chippewa County budget. And be it further resolved that the sum of 135,731 and 63 cents be transferred from the sales tax property tax relief fund to the debt service fund and utilize 118,943 and 37 cents for the 2020 capital improvement project bonds for payments on the principal and interest on the transportation bonds to be included in the 2024 Chippewa County budget. And be it further resolved that the sum of 653,300 dollars be transferred from the sales tax property tax relief fund to the debt service fund for the 2022 capital improvement project bonds for payments on the principal and interest on the transportation bonds to be included in the 2024 Chippewa County budget, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Later, seconds.
Discussion? Lori, I think you're...
Yeah, sorry, I'm it again. So this resolution is, which is approved each year, the payments have already been approved with the bond issuance, but this resolution is really showing you how these payments are being paid in 2024, because a sales tax, a sales tax ordinance requires that a resolution is passed by county board each to utilize sales tax funds. And typically, the resolution is usually strictly using sales tax funds to pay for those total payments. This year's a little unique, because we're using fund balance, and the reason we are is after we had talked to Baird, they had suggested to utilize those fund balances to prove that all premiums we received on the issuances have been utilized in reducing our payments as required by law. So the total fund balance available to utilize is the 768,420 dollars and 18 cents.
Okay, hearing none, then we will call the vote. Those in favor, press green, those not in favor, press red.
Nineteen yes, zero no. Resolution number 19-23, resolution to approve the use of sales tax funds for the annual contribution to the Chippewa Valley Regional Airport to be used for airport capital projects and/or airport debt service as part of the 2024 Chippewa County budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the sum of 132,890 dollars be transferred from the sales tax property tax relief fund to the airport budget and the general fund to pay Chippewa County's 2024 airport agreement contribution to be used for capital projects and debt service as enumerated in the airport budget, all as part of the recommended 2024 Chippewa County budget, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Per John, a motion to approve.
Okay, discussion. Lori?
So this resolution is also a resolution brought forward every year to be approved, based off of the approved contract, if you recall, I think it was back in April, you guys approved it in agreement with the Chippewa, I'm sorry, the Chippewa Valley Regional Airport with the Eau Claire County, and this is the same exact amount, if you recall, that the whole, till 2028, it's the same exact amount throughout those, the whole contract.
Hearing none, then we will call the vote. In favor, press green, to disapprove, press red.
Nineteen yes, zero no.
Okay, resolution passes. Resolution 1023, or 2023, 20...
Resolution number 2023, resolution to authorize the use of sales tax funds for facilities and parks capital improvement projects in 2024. Now therefore be it resolved that the county board does hereby authorize the transfer of 975,000 dollars from the sales tax fund to the facilities and parks division to be used to complete the LED lighting upgrade project, parking lot maintenance, register and probate juvenile intake office project, and the Department of Human Services and County Boardroom master planning, and be it further resolved that the funding for these projects be included in the 2024 Chippewa County budget, forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Hunt, motion to approve.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, discussion, Randy? Or Larry? Larry's got this.
So I can go through the four projects that are presented here. First one is the government center campus lighting upgrade. So this project will upgrade about 3,000 lamps in the jail and sheriff's department from fluorescent to LED with a pretty significant energy savings, so that's the request for that one. The next project is the parking lot maintenance. So the 50,000 dollars that's requested is utilized every other year to maintain the parking lots that surround the government center campus here, so this is pretty routine maintenance, and if you notice in the north parking lot, it's starting to get chuck holes in it, so we'll do some minor maintenance this year and then get after it a little more next year. The third project is register and probate and juvenile intake office remodel. So this office hasn't been remodeled for quite a few years, so it's really at, I would say, end of life with finishes, and also it's got some security concerns that were called out in the integrated security plan, so this project will really respond to both of those concerns, it'll update the finishes and it'll also install some security enhancement barriers and card access, maybe some cameras, stuff like that, if we work through the design. So that project, we were looking at 280,000 dollars. And the last project is Department of Human Services and the County Boardroom, Phase One master planning. So everybody's probably aware of the Department of Human Services and how they're growing, acquiring a lot of staff, kind of their service model's changing, they've got staff that are working at home, working here, sharing offices, and it seems like it's changing really continually. Sounds like there is a need for more staff, is what I recently heard, so this master planning exercise will look at that and look at their needs and try to figure out what we can do with the space to meet those needs and accommodate them, hopefully for a ways into the future, so. And we'll also look at this room and see if it fits into the plan or not, we're not sure if DHS will need more space, so if they did, this may be the area that they'd grow into, since it's on the third floor, I don't know, but anyway, it'll just be part of the study at that time. So, what do we have on that one? 600,000 dollars on that, but the study will be much, much, much less than that. What, the remaining dollars would then be used in the future years to do the actual remodeling of the space. So that's the four projects, I don't know if there's any questions?
Any questions? Supervisor Rollmire?
With the boardroom here, when I ran for this office, one of the things I heard from many constituents is, the acoustics are horrible here, and I've, many different board members, although they're not speaking out about it, that the difficulty of hearing what's really going on in here, and I've had that trouble myself, and I, I advise you to be, that we look at that seriously. I think it's very important that people be able to hear what's going on, not only in the boardroom, but the constituents that are watching the live feed of this meeting.
Well noted, yep, I will make a note of that.
Supervisor Cockens?
I thought when we did our budget, there was 500,000 in the remodel list, and I thought we said no, we weren't going to spend that kind of money.
I'm not sure, it went, in previous years, it was brought forward, it was brought back again as part of DHS study, so it seems like, you know, since we're looking at the third floor, DHS is pretty much this entire third floor, other than the bathrooms, the elevator bay, and this room, so that's what DHS is, I mean, it's the entire third floor. So if they're going to need more space, and I'm not sure if they will, but it's, it's looking that way, it seems like it would only make sense in the study to then look at this space that they may need to grow into, and if they do, then that would displace this room, and then where would this room go? I'm not sure, but we may have to go through and see, you know, look at the options and figure that out, and then bring back some options. So again, this isn't to remodel, this is a study to figure out what, what the options are, what the costs are, and then bring it back, so it'll take probably three years to, between the study and then complete construction, so it'll be a multiple-year, three-year phased approach to it. So, yep.
Supervisor Steele, by the way, are the buttons working? You can push your green button to speak, that way we can see you up here.
I, wait, I thought you were getting ready to go on, quick.
No, go ahead.
Consortium downstairs, the Wisconsin Consortium? How many people work down there? I mean, that's part of the Department of Human Services, really, and they're on the first floor. I don't know, I don't know how many people we have down there.
I can't answer that, I'm, I'm not sure.
But, if anybody'd be moving, I would think that you'd put them all together rather than have them all over the place.
Well, I think we're going to be short on space up here right now for the, for the departments that are up here, so, so to add more up here, I'm not sure how we would approach that.
Well, I just, it's a thought, you know, it is all over the county, very soon it's going to be the Department of Human Resources building.
Okay. Alrighty, thank you. Okay, any other discussion? Hearing none, then we'll call the vote. Those in favor, press green, those in favor, press red.
Nineteen yes, zero no.
Okay, resolution passes. Ready for 2123? Resolution 2123.
Resolution to authorize funding of highway department capital improvement projects as part of the 2024 Chippewa County budget. Now therefore be it resolved pursuant to statute 2-361A3B of the Code of Ordinances, that this, those are ordinance, that the sum of 3,100,000 dollars be transferred from the sales tax fund to be used to fund highway department roadway and bridge projects in 2024 as part of the 2024 county budget. And be it further resolved that pursuant to Chippewa County Policy 305, Fund Balance or Non-Lapsing Account Expenditure Policy, the county board does hereby authorize the highway department to utilize fund balance in the amount of 1,100,000 dollars. million one hundred thousand dollars from the highway department machinery fund to purchase highway department machinery in 2024 as part of the 2024 county budget. And be it further resolved that pursuant to Chippewa County policy three oh five fund balance or non-lapsing account expenditure policy, the county board does hereby authorize the highway department to utilize fund balance in the amount of one hundred thousand dollars from the highway department machinery fund balance to be used for the improvement of county highway buildings and grounds projects in 2024 as part of the 2024 county budget. Be it further resolved pursuant to two dash three six one A three B of the code of ordinances that the sum of three hundred thousand dollars we transferred from the sales tax fund to be used to fund replacement of vehicles in the county's non-highway fleet in 2024 as part of the 2024 county budget forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Do I hear a motion to approve? Supervisor Steele and Romeyer for the second. Or Skew, Zakarsky. Yep. And Romeyer for the second. Zakarsky, Romeyer. Yep.
Good evening. I'm Phil in for Brian. So I guess if you guys have got any questions, trying to help you out.
Any question? Go ahead. I guess, any questions? Could be an easy assignment.
Yeah. Good for tonight, thanks.
All right. Any questions? Last call.
How much is in the sales tax fund? Or how much can we get yearly out of that?
Tori?
We usually get about eight point five million a year right now. That's what we had last year.
Thank you.
And right now, too, we also have quite a fund balance. I think we have about close to thirteen million in our fund balance. So just so you understand that, we have like about five million. So that's part of why we had the highway department use three million this year, because last year, if you recall, they used three million dollars of bonding for twenty-three, and a lot of it had to do with the Cobbin Bridge. So to make it up so that they still could do road improvements, even though the bridge took a lot of our bonding funds, we're keeping the, putting three million in for sales tax.
Okay. Again, to speak, remember to push your button. That way, we can see you up here. Anyone else? Supervisor Jor? Mueller?
Oh, there we go. Yeah, I just had a brief question. That, that snowplow truck that got clobbered this last winter, was that part of the replacement? Or did that get separately somehow replaced?
That's an insurance claim.
Good enough. Thank you.
Yep, that's going against our insurance.
Sounds good. Thank you.
No problem.
No further names popping up here, then we will call the vote. All those in favor, press your green button. Opposed, red.
Nineteen yes, zero no.
Okay, resolution passes. Resolution twenty-two twenty-three.
Resolution number twenty-two dash twenty-three, resolution to authorize use of sales tax revenue funds for computer equipment replacement as part of the 2024 capital improvement plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the sum of two hundred seventy-five thousand dollars be transferred from the sales tax fund to the computer outlay account to be used for computer system equipment replacement in 2024 as part of the 2024 county budget forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Hey, do I hear a motion to approve?
This shall move.
Later, a second.
Later for the second. Okay, Andy?
All right, good evening. So this resolution is a pretty standard resolution that we bring every year for replacing our equipment that are used by the end users, as well as the data center infrastructure that we have running kind of behind the scenes for storage of data, different systems that run and so forth. So for 2024, we would be looking for the two hundred seventy-five thousand. Approximately one hundred thirty-five thousand will be for the data center infrastructure, for our storage area network, wireless access points and other data center equipment like that. One hundred forty thousand would be for the end user equipment, which would be laptops, the county board iPads, projectors, monitors, and things around that end of things. So again, the biggest thing with this is making sure that we're renewing our equipment on a regular basis so that it's up to date for security purposes, as well as reliable for the 24/7 operations that need to keep going here. So that'll entertain any questions?
Supervisor Steele?
Andy, the consortium that we're talking about downstairs here, I brought up. Is any of this money going to support them?
Short answer is no. We are doing our best to make sure if there's PCs for employees that work in those areas, that's getting billed back correctly to the Medicare Fund, Medicare. So yeah, we're making sure that software, hardware, and things like that. It can be very challenging for, like, for example, our server infrastructure, because it's used by all the different departments. But we've been working with finance and the administrator on trying to come up with how can we use the percentages to bill that back appropriately.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Then we will call the vote. Those in favor, press green. Those opposed, press red.
Nineteen yes, zero no.
Okay, resolution passes. Resolution twenty-three twenty-three. Need a motion to approve?
Omar will.
Omar moves and second. Go ahead, read it.
I know, I know. Resolution number twenty-three twenty-three, resolution to authorize the use of sales tax funds and non-lapsing funding for Department of Land Conservation and Forest Management capital improvement projects as part of the 2024 county budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the sum of one hundred thousand dollars consisting of approximately fifty thousand dollars from county stewardship fund balance and fifty thousand dollars from the sales tax fund be included in the 2024 capital improvement plan as part of the 2024 county budget to be administered pursuant to the Chippewa County stewardship fund policy and procedures for program administration as previously adopted through resolution number eighty-nine ninety-nine. And be it further resolved that the sum of three hundred thousand dollars consisting of approximately one hundred fifty thousand dollars from state of Wisconsin grants and one hundred fifty thousand dollars from the forest and trails special conservation fund balance be included in the 2024 capital improvement plan as part of the 2024 county budget to be used to acquire county forest lands subject to county board approval. And be it further resolved that the sum of one hundred and twenty thousand dollars be applied from the county snowmobile state fund to be included in the 2024 capital improvement plan as part of the 2024 county budget to be used for construction of snowmobile bridges if grant funding is approved by the Department of Natural Resources forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
So we hear the motion. Romeyer?
I'll second.
And second was? You changed seats. I was looking for Linda.
Thank you. So the first item on the, the capital improvement plan is the county stewardship fund. And this is for land that landowners wish to have purchased conservation easements. So land that would be in a perpetual easement to be managed for conservation purposes, either wildlife, land use. And as was stated, fifty, fifty thousand is from a fund balance, and then fifty thousand would be from sales tax. Similar to that is the county forest land acquisition. And so this, the county forest is for land specifically for the county forest. So the first one is for all lands outside of the county forest, and this one would be specifically for land that would be included in the county forest blocking boundary. This one is a hundred and fifty thousand fund balance. And then the state of Wisconsin has grants that would match fifty percent up to a hundred and fifty thousand. And once again, it would be conservation easement managed for the county forest purposes. And then the last one is for the purchase of a snowmobile bridge. So the Chippewa Valley Snowmobile Organization applies for a grant that is max up to a hundred twenty thousand dollars. And they do this each year to help replace the, the bridges along the snowmobile trails in, in Chippewa County.
Any questions?
Can you just scroll up a little bit? Thank you.
Any questions? All right. Thank you. Okay. Any further discussion? If none, we will call the vote. All those in favor, press green. Opposed, red. Waiting for me?
Nineteen yes, zero no.
Okay, resolution twenty-four twenty-three.
Resolution number twenty-four dash twenty-three, resolution to authorize the use of sales tax revenue funds by the sheriff's department to purchase radios and equipment as part of the 2024 capital improvement plan. Now therefore be it resolved that the sum of one hundred sixty-six thousand dollars be transferred from the sales tax fund to the sheriff's department equipment fund to be used for the purchase of radio replacements and equipment upgrades in 2024 as part of the 2024 county budget forwarded to the county board by the executive committee.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion to approve. To the bird.
Erickson, seconds.
And Erickson for the second.
Good evening. This is actually broken down into, into two parts. We'll talk about the radios first and then the specialized equipment second. As a standard practice, what we've done in the past is we've worked on a 10-year cycle. We'd purchase three to four radios every single year over about 10 years, and then that would get everybody a new radio. That worked in the past. Technology's changed a lot in the last few years, and we realize that that no longer works for us. The radios that we purchased nine years ago are falling into obsolescence, and they can't be reprogrammed, and they, they can't receive the new upgrades. So we, what we end up doing is we end up purchasing to replace those radios before we even reach the end of our 10-year cycle. And that's been kind of a repetitive thing over the last two years. So what we're asking to do is we're asking to get the sixty-seven thousand dollars for the radio project to, instead of doing it on a 10-year cycle, to shorten it to a three-year cycle. So we're still purchasing everybody one radio. But then you won't, after three years, you won't hear from us again for probably close to nine, nine more years. That way, everybody has the same radio, because as you can imagine, communication's pretty paramount in what we're doing. And just for an example, we had an incident in the city right next to us right here, where we all responded to to help mount with an individual that was running around the city. We could not communicate with them, because our radios could not communicate with the city radios. Everything had to be relayed real time through dispatch, switching back and forth to channels. Not a good, not a good scenario. So we're asking for the radio project to be completed so we can upgrade our radios. So before we move on to the specialized equipment, is there any questions on the radios?
Just, just a question. They, they will, I assume then, this will put sheriff's department on basically equal footing with all the other departments in the?
Yes. The, the problem we're running into in the past, we didn't have problems because everybody had one choice, an analog radio. That was the choice you had. Now we have digital radios and analog radios. Some departments are going digital, some are not. That's the wave of the future. It's going to eventually, just like with your cable, when everybody switched and you lost channels if you didn't have a digital TV. Same's going to happen to radios. We just, we have to buy into this and get ready for it. And we'd rather do it slowly and buy digital capable and digital ready radios, rather than continue to buy analog radios. And then when it, they drop the bomb and say in the next three years, you got to do this, now the price tag's going to be huge. Because, and probably a short supply, because now everybody's racing to get it. So we're trying to stay ahead of the curve and, and buy radios that function for us, where we can commute with, or communicate with regardless what agency, even another county that we're working with.
So it's, I go back even further, you know, back to the scanner days, where that's how we used to have to listen in to other departments and then jump in and help. But this way, they can actually communicate different departments directly.
The newer radios that we already purchased that aren't on here, that we had to buy this year, because it wasn't part of this plan, those have been upgraded so we can communicate with the city now with a turn of a, a button. Now we can communicate directly with the city and not have to do the back and forth stuff with our dispatch.
Got it. Excellent. Thank you.
Any more questions on radios before I move on to specialized equipment?
A general question. We had a big fund balance after we did the towers. In fact, we switched some money back with a, with a big, we saved a lot of money there, and we had a lot left over, and we switched some back. Is there still anything in that account?
There are still funds in there. The problem is, is the project isn't over. There's still, we're waiting for some invoices to come through. And then, once I think the project is finalized, then I know Randy will be coming back to you guys to talk.
Well, I just wanted, could use those funds for, for that?
We have bought some radios already with those funds.
All right, thanks.
So moving on to the, to the specialized equipment, there are several things that we're looking at. Radar units. Exact same story with radar units as with the radios. We have radar units that are 20 years old that will not take the upgrades. Same exact scenario. We need to get everybody the same equipment that can take the updates that are, are the newer versions. So we're asking for, for a purchase of that. The next item is portable ballistic shields, shields that an officer can, can carry up to protect themselves against certain caliber rounds that are shot at them. At one point in time, this was a specialized piece of equipment that only went to tac teams and SWAT teams. Unfortunately, we're living in a time right now where that's going to be a standard piece of equipment for every officer. And you flip the news on, and you can see why. So we're asking for, for nineteen of those to be placed in squads. The next is AEDs, the automatic external DPHIBs. This really has to do more with like the, the night shift when everybody's sleeping, and it's up in the parks of the county where they don't have a EMS that's going to get there right away. The officers are already awake. They're already, hopefully, they're, they're in the area possibly. And if there is somebody that has a heart attack or, or heart issue, they can be the first ones that are going to, that can deliver, because, you know, obviously, seconds count. So we'd like to get those, those pieces of equipment. They're pretty standard pretty much everywhere you go. You go into some restaurants, you see them in restaurants, you see them in the malls. You see them everywhere. And there's no reason that we shouldn't have these in the squad cars to better serve the community in case like this happens, when someone's on duty. And the last thing we're asking for is high visibility suits. We already have these for the patrol officers. These are going to be for the investigators. They were, I don't want to say overlooked, but they were never really thought of. They do process crime scenes on the side of the road sometimes if it, if it dictates. And they're standing out there, and there's no guarantee that they're going to be seen. We want to get the high vis suits for them so they can stand out, and they don't become a statistic. That's basically what we're asking for.
Any questions?
Any questions on the equipment?
Okay. Thank you, Kurt.
Thanks.
Okay, then we will call the vote. If there's no further discussion, press green. Disapproved, press red.
Nineteen yes, zero no.
Okay, resolution passes. Resolution twenty-five twenty-three.
Resolution number twenty-five dash twenty-three, resolution to extend the employment agreement between Chippewa County and county administrator Randall B. Shoals. Now therefore be it resolved that the attached employment agreement between Chippewa County, Wisconsin, and Randall B. Shoals is hereby approved effective Wisconsin and Randall B. Shoals is hereby approved effective January 1, 2024 with the terms of employment as set forth in the, in that agreement. And be it further resolved that the Chippewa County Board Chair is authorized to sign the employment agreement on behalf of Chippewa County recommended for approval by the executive committee.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve?
Later makes a motion to approve. I'll second it.
Seconded by McGill. Okay, I guess Todd, you're?
Okay, I guess I'm it tonight. As Lori said, Tony Wolfelder is on vacation, so I'm taking one for the team on this. So this is the proposed extension of employment agreement between the county and the county As indicated, the resolution proposes, proposes to extend Randy's contract with the county. And as you can see in your materials, there are both track changes and clean copies. We have the track changes up here so you can see that, what terms have changed. Really, the only substantive terms that are proposed to change that were negotiated by the executive committee are the four-year term. It's another four-year contract being proposed beginning January 1, 24 through December 31, 2027. And then the salary numbers have also changed. And then if you page down, there's one minor change, and that is just making the work hours consistent with the, the change in the courthouse hours. So if anybody has any questions, I'll do my best. I've been pretty much just an observer in this.
Supervisor Hall?
Yeah, I, I do just, an authorization to spend money here with the nebulous thing that just says plus fringes, which fringes are fairly substantial. I'm just curious why it's worded. You know, we don't have a, you know, just kind of a picture of what that is. I don't have any disagreement with it, I'm just curious why it's, if there's a salary present and says plus fringes and there's, I assume a substantial amount of money that's in the fringes as far as unemployment matching or retirement matching, those kind of things. Just wonder why the picture of the money is not there for us. I'm just curious.
Kind of hard for me to answer whether those, why those weren't broken down. I don't know if Lori can.
Lori can help us out.
You're just, you're still authorizing money, it's just whether the picture, there's not a picture there, I'm just curious.
Yeah, I don't know why the contract, they must not, never have had them in the past with the agreements, but usually a rule of thumb right now is that a general employer right now, I would say it's about almost 19% of fringe benefit, you take 19% of the wages for regular fringe benefits, that would be FICA and Medicare, WRS, workers' comp and disability. And there's a couple other minor benefits like ETF life insurance and stuff like that. But then also you have health insurance, and right now it's $23,988 a year.
I understand, I, I kind of know those things, I'm just curious, as we're approving, this is approving expenditure essentially on the contrary, approve the contract with that. It just, it seems a relatively substantial lot of things are just not mentioned.
Yeah, well, we don't do it for other elected officials, so when elected officials come through too, I don't believe that those are spelled out either.
Just a question on.
Any other discussion or questions? Okay, hearing none, then we will call the vote. Those in favor, press green. Those opposed, press red.
19 yes, 0 no.
Okay, resolution passes.
Thanks, everyone. Bad meeting.
All right. First reading ordinance 423, so we won't be voting on this, first reading.
And again, I have the distinction of handling this one tonight for Randy. Yeah, this was, Chapter 22 is emergency management. And the, you know, the original purpose in amending Chapter 22 when we started out was to essentially codify the recent reorganization of the Emergency Management Division. As you know, it went from a standalone department to being a division under the supervision of the sheriff. So given that those changes were needed, we decided we may as well have me go through Chapter 22 to make sure all of the statutory references, the definitions and everything were up to stuff, up to snuff with state law. And lo and behold, it ended up being quite a deep dive. For the most part, there haven't been any major changes to Chapter 22 since the 1980 code. So the state law has changed quite a bit with regards to emergency management. It moved from Chapter 40, or Chapter 22 of the state statutes to Chapter 323. So I went through and made all of the necessary changes to make the definitions, the duties of the Emergency Management Director all consistent with Chapter 323. That was one part of it. And then the other changes that were made was inserting the county's, essentially county's practice, codifying their practice with regards to declaring a county emergency so that that's in the ordinance for everybody to see. But that's really it. Majority of it though, as I indicated, is just to, to make everything consistent with Chapter 23, Emergency Management in the State Statutes.
Any questions? Okay. Then we will move on to the county administrator appointments.
The two appointments are reappointments of Larry Marquardt and Julie Geisler, and these terms would expire June 30, 2026.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
Is there a second?
Hold on a second.
Hold your on. Any discussion? Hearing none, we will call the vote to approve, press green.
19 yes, 0 no.
And sir approved. Agenda items for future consideration, number 11, special county board meeting, June 20, 23 at 6:00 PM. This is a very important meeting. So we put it on here so you can put it on your calendar. So this may be one of the most important meetings you attend in your career as county board members. So make sure you mark it on that calendar, put it in your watches, your iPads, everything.
Right on your hand.
Right on your hand, your ear, wherever you want to. Yeah, otherwise, anything else, write off, go for future agenda items. Then I would seek a motion to adjourn.
Erickson makes that motion.
Okay, and there's a.
Hold on a second.
Okay, green to adjourn, red if you want to stay.